I believe Dr. Walklewitz has a presentation for us, a district-wide and school-wide academic plans.
Do you want me to just sit here?
Yeah.
Okay. Good evening. I'm going to review our district-wide academic plan and school-wide academic plans for the 24-25 school year. As a side note, although our schools weren't identified as a target school or a target district this year, we still have a Title I obligation to write school-wide plans for each of our buildings because each of our schools is a Title I school. And our district is also a Title I district. So this is kind of a combination of a school-wide plan to meet the Title I obligations, as well as a review of our current data and academic goals that would be found in a target school plan, should we ever have to dip into that again. So we just want to be prepared and proactive to create the conversation with our teachers and our community about what our academic goals are. So just so you know, the volume of this work, this was done over the course of last year. These are our team members. So for the district team, we did have the administrators, as well as our district leadership team. I was sitting in all of the building-level meetings just to get the data so that we could kind of culminate all the ideas into one building. We have a high school team, the middle school team, who's been through this process before because they were identified target school, and then our two elementary buildings. And this will be posted on our website, so you can see a little bit more in depth. So I just want to take you on a run-through of our goals for the 23-24 year that we designed last year. And just to show you what our measurable goals were, what the outcomes were of those goals by the end of this last year, and some of the highlights that brought us to those goals, some of the things we created as systems, as programs, that made us succeed or meet our goals. So for our first priority from last year, our goal was to deepen connections and building relationships among students, staff, and families. We use our survey data to interview twice a year what our fall data would say and our spring. And we looked at years past under those measures. So for the last three years, we've been measuring the same outcomes, sending those same surveys out, to see if we've made any progress in any of those areas. So yes, they've increased some of the areas that we were targeting for this priority. In those survey responses, those areas have increased consistently over the last few years, from spring to spring and fall to spring. And some of the highlights that got us there, this, our new student mentoring program, it was present in the past. We visited, brought it back. Our district and school-wide PVIS initiative, which is part of our MTSS program, and our increase in positive referrals. So that was something newer, our secondary started, and our elementary is sending home like positive notes home to parents. Our priority two, our ability to provide cohesive, relevant curriculum that's accessible to students and instructional staff. We looked at our high school courses, at our course catalogs and maps, and did an inventory. Where, we started, when I presented this earlier in the year, I showed where we did our initial. It was mostly reds. We inventoried all the different curriculum areas and courses from each grade level. And it was mostly reds and yellows, which are kind of works in progress or non-existent. And we are primarily green. So we'll have a little opening day ceremony, just to showcase the work that's been over the last few years on curriculum development. We're also going to post that on our district website. So I'm going to be working with technology in the next few weeks to get all of our curriculum maps up there. So they have the course description and a map associated with that course. Our surveys also identified and showed improvement in students' perception of the rigor that's going on here. And some of that has, especially in our secondary, students have noted the college coursework and the honors courses that we added recently. And our last priority was the fidelity to build a K-12 multi-tiered system in support, which is our MTSS, to provide academic behavior and attendance needs of all students. And our goal is to create the movement between tier one, two, and three. So if kids needed the service, they would move up in tier. And if they met the needs of those services, they may move back down into the tier, which is what we want to see, that fluidity between student movement. The use of data dashboard, continuing to build our MTSS protocols and programs, and increase positive referrals for our MTSS questions through the family and parent and teacher surveys. So our data dashboard took another hold because we were implementing Power Schools. It's on hold right now. We are using it minimally with school tool data last year, just for attendance purposes. Look at our attendance increases and decreases. But that's going to be something we're going to be moving on once Power Schools up and running. That's going to be the next phase of development with our tech team. And some of the programs were our, we, this year, we spent time, especially with our elementary, to do cut scores. So in the past, we didn't know how to get kids out of tiers. Well, you know, how do we move them back into, from the tier three to tier two when they make progress? So we really developed that piece in our secondary work on tier one interventions. So things that teachers can do in their classroom to avoid kids moving up in tiers. So that was the highlights of our work the last few years. So here's our priorities for this year. I'm not going to go through every single one, so you can read through the measurable goals. But our team, most importantly, worked on saying, what else can we measure other than student surveys? Those are super important, the student and staff and family engagement surveys. But also looking at our attendance records and other data. So this year, I took, our teams are building out data through our reading committee, and I started collecting a district data folder, so that teams can go in and pick from our district data that we have compiled already. So I was starting to analyze it for our teams, so they can go through and look. And our reading team analyzed our reading data, and I'll present that at another date in the near future. But just so you know, that's happening. And once we get our data dashboard, that will make us easily implement what we want and what we're using into that data dashboard design. Curriculum development. Part of my board report is we went to an awesome PLC that really tied the curriculum initiative we've been working on those last few years, of building our curriculum, as well as doing common assessments. So we can measure the same thing in the same subject area and see student growth overall. So teachers are doing the same thing at the same time in those common classes. And that's something we're working on more this year, and tying it with the new Next Gen Standards, for those who are moving into those Next Gen Standard requirements. And we're going to use, again, survey data and our district inventory of our course development. And then finally, our third priority this year is data analysis and communication. We want to continue our K-12 MTSS, because that is the umbrella of what curriculum instruction falls under. It's how you differentiate instruction and move kids throughout our grade levels. So our MTSS teams do meet regularly, and they have a direction and goals within their school plans of their individual needs. So our sec, our elementary teams have teamed up to have similar goals. And our secondary have similar but more specialized goals to their needs. So that's how we designed our school-wide plans. And then our high school, they created prior, I'm not going to go through each one, I promise eight minutes or less. The high school priorities, and you do have the plan, so you can read more thoroughly. They created priorities within their teams, what they want to work on this year and how they're going to measure it, as well as our middle school. And you'll see some of the common themes, we themed them out, and then wrote our commitments. And our East Main Elementary. And yes, I did have to go back through their plan and take out ASK, because it is East Main, because, you know, we're still going to use that. And our HBE School. One thing that has to fall under our Title I expectation is to service our students that are homeless. And that is a district and school goal. So we wrote one goal as a district, and that fits within each of our school plans. So this is what we came up with. We really want to ensure that our homeless students have transportation, all the supplies and materials they need to be able to function in school on a daily basis as they need it. So if they need to come for, if they're abandoned, and they need to come to an evening concert, that they have transportation for them and their families to get here, so they can participate equally with other students who have those resources. So that's a commitment we all made in our schools and our district. Are there any questions? And you have the full school-wide plans, and the district plan has to be voted on tonight, and it is in one of the action items. So once that's voted on, we'll put all of our school-wide plans up on our curriculum instruction website under each school, and we'll have a space for the district plan.
You have them totally printed out for us, because how many pages it was?
Yeah, I did print them, I believe.
Oh, you did, okay.
Yeah, I believe, I know they were sent. I thought Kristen was going to put them in the folders, but we'll get them to.
Okay.
Yeah. Any other question?
Thank you, Dr. Walklewitz. We have no one for public comment. That brings us to administrative reports. Dr. Bell.
Thank you.
Superintendent of Schools.
Thank you. Hello, everybody. First thing is, just to remind everyone about the East Main Elementary grand opening is on Saturday, August 31st. We changed the time from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM, because Mr. Happy Sudo Mass is going to be at 10:00 AM. So we moved the opening ceremonies to 1:00 PM. So again, 8:31 at 1:00 PM. And we'll make a push on social media and on the website, so that all the public, if they haven't heard through all the videos and everything else, we've been talking about this thing for a while, and we'll make sure we push it out on social media, so everybody's aware. Everybody I talked to in town can't wait. I can't believe how many people say they're coming. So we're planning for hundreds, potentially a thousand might come through that day. It's kind of, it's unbelievable. People are calling me from all over the place, even out-of-town people who graduated from that school are coming into town from places like Kingston and maneuver to see their school. They can't wait to see what their old school looks like. We'll be okay. Yeah, we'll be okay. We're fearing that it's going to be all afternoon, like, you know, we don't think everybody necessarily will come to dedication, but they all want to come. They'll probably want to miss the speech, but just get the tour. So, but we are excited. You know, we are excited to say this.
You're the keynote speaker.
We're going to be very short. There's a lot of.
I think, I think you should be.
Yeah, and there's a lot of politicians who are going to be invited, and they'll be asked to just wait. They all get near the mic, you know.
Even the politicians, too.
Yes. So I'll orchestrate everything from the podium, and if the weather's good, we're going to do it out front. If it's not, then we'll move into the gym and do it from there. Just to give you an update on the three phases. East Main Street Elementary, everything's on schedule. It's going to be a very, very busy month. No lie, today, there had to be probably almost 70 workers in the, in the old building today. So a lot gets done when you have a lot of people, but there's still a lot to do. But, but if anybody, if you hear, we're starting late, or we're having split sessions, or what was the other one? Remote learning?
Remote learning.
All that's bunk. We are opening on time. The kids will be there on the 3rd, the teachers will be there on the 28th. So, but just to give you an idea of what's going on, this week, they're doing the gym floor, and they're finishing the flooring in the third-floor hallway. Next week, they're doing the second-floor hallway, putting furniture into the third floor, and hanging the smartboards in the entire building. Also, the elevator inspection and the fire alarm inspection are both next week. A water, water sample testing is actually going on this week for the water fountains in the, in the kitchen. The week of the 19th, the new furniture will be delivered. That's for the first and second floor. The first-floor hallway tiles will go in. And also the week of the 19th, all the books from here will move to the new library at East Main. And then all the middle school books that were boxed up in June will then occupy this, this library. And then the week of the 26th is when the 10-month employees come back. The 10-month employees are here on the 28th and 29th for two days of in-service training. Probably Monday, that 26th will be the date that we open the school for teachers. So they'll have their two workdays, but they'll also could have Monday, Friday, Saturday, if they so choose. With Saturday being the, the open house in the afternoon. So they'll have the morning to make everything look spiffy if they feel like coming in. In terms of Phase Two and Three, which is work that's going on here, they continue to do all the renovations to the, the former ASK rooms that are becoming middle school rooms. Things like band, chorus, art, fax, tech ed, they're all being renovated as we speak. And in the high school, it's the new high school library, the old high school library being converted to science classrooms, renovations to the auditorium, and a new nurses' office. So all that work is going on right now. Out behind us, out by 209, the backstops and the fencing up the first and third baselines are done for the baseball softball field. They've got all the mix for the topsoil, sand, and fertilizer. And they'll be starting spreading that probably in another week or so on this end. They've already put the piles of dirt now on the baseball and softball fields, so they'll probably start that, spreading that next week. The first coat of blacktop on the tennis courts and the new basketball court is done. So then there'll be a top coat, and then they put the coating over it, where your paint aligns and everything. So it's a multi-step process. We're pushing them to try to make sure that it's ready for tennis practice on the 26th. So we have our fingers crossed that we'll have good weather, but we have to push, 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 and have weather cooperate after this week. Of course, Chase Field is done with everything but the track, so the teams are using it for summer workouts. And then what we're trying to do is we will coordinate when will be the best time to have them put the rubber surface on the track that would be the least disruptive to fall sports. So we're negotiating with the, with the contractor now about trying to figure out when would be the best time. And then the schedule is that we will do the rubber on Chase after Glenette is ready. So that therefore, while they're doing the rubber on the rubber track at Chase, we can move everything over to Glenette and keep everybody off of Chase during that time when they're pouring the rubber surface for the track. And that will be, the plan right now is that varsity football only has three home games, one in September, two in October. And the plan is that looks like unless, unless they get Glenette done sooner than scheduled, the first game, the first home football game against Liberty would be at Chase. And then homecoming against New Paltz on October 4th, and Minnesick on October 27th would both be at Glenette. So, so practice space is going to be incredibly tight. It's going to take a lot of scheduling and probably some lights on at Chase, so that we can use the field all day long for different teams during our preseason practices and all that stuff. But, but everything is going according to plan. Anybody who's ever been involved in construction project knows there'll always be a punch list of stuff. This room is missing base molding. This room needs touch-up paint. This room, we've got to get an outlet cover on there before the kids come in on Tuesday, you know, that kind of stuff. There's always a million little things to be done. So Labor Day weekend will be really, really crazy. And we've told our guys, let's get as many of them as possible from our B&amp;G crew, men and women from B&amp;G to work on Labor Day weekend on any last-minute stuff. But I have to say, our B&amp;G crew is over at East Main right now, cleaning all the third-floor rooms, and then they're working their way down to the second floor. So they're cleaning the rooms to get every, even though there's stuff going on everywhere, they're cleaning rooms, closing doors, sealing them off, so that we can just keep chipping away, so that when they say, okay, we're ready to flip the switch for the power, the fire, whatever, that all the rooms are ready. You know, and then we'll be populating them with all the furniture and all the teacher supplies. There's a world record of teacher supplies out in the bus garage parking lot. There are nine tractor trailers of stuff that needs to be moved over to the East Main Street School. So that alone is going to be a Herculean task by our B&amp;G staff. But we're in good shape with all that. I just wanted to tell you two other real quick things. In your folder is the modified district calendar, and I'll talk to the specifics about it when we get to that item on the agenda. And then also, the completed end-of-year student attendance. And I'm happy to tell you that student attendance went up in every building. High school went from 88.3 to 89.7. Middle school went from 89.3 to 91.2. ASK went from 90.6 to 92. And HBE went from 90.9 to 92.5. So they've all made about a point and a half, which is a lot in a year. To move a point and a half is a huge number. And so, and then, yeah. And then our, our staff attendance was also good. We, we set a, a record for the number of people with perfect attendance this year with no sick days. There were 34 people, 17 from each unit, who had no sick days. And, and so that's really good, because the year before, it wasn't 34 with no sick days, it was five. So it made a, made a big impact. So we're, and so we thank everybody for their commitment to coming to school. And we always say, our kids do best when our A-team is here. And they really showed up and did a great job. So they're deserving of their attendance incentive this year. So that's everything I have for you.
Thank you. Dr. Walklewitz, I know you presented, is there anything additional?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention, we had a lot of curriculum writing this, this summer, which, we had over 20 teams, and I mean teams like third grade, fourth grade, as teams, composed of about over 125 teachers come in this summer to work on curriculum writing. So each were allowed six hours. If we needed to grant a little bit more, we could. And just, I, like, just tonight, I got curriculum maps sent to me. So as they're coming in, we're doing, it's incredible work they're doing. I can't even tell you. Our K-5 teachers, we have two summer workshops that we've offered, one tonight from 1:00 to 7:00. We have a bunch of teachers signed up, and as well as August 13th, that's optional. And we do have quite a few teachers who signed up for Eureka Math Squared, which is the next version of Eureka Math, just the updated version. So they're doing the translation between the two. And then we had 24 teachers, principals, as well as Tanya and I attend a professional learning community, PLC, training in Albany the last couple of days. And I can't even tell you the energy from that professional workshop. And I just want to thank Dr. Bell, because we freed up a lot of money, spent a lot of staff, and the outcome is incredible. So we're looking to build that into some of our grant work for future. And that's going to be our undercurrent community tone as we move forward with our staff and how we look at curriculum instruction. So it's going to be a game-changer at court. I just want to thank everyone for supporting that. And just so, any teachers and staff out there, principals will be kicking off their superintendent conference day with some PLC, but not the full kit and kaboodle. We're going to, we're going to train more staff throughout the year, and then do a big opening fall of 2025.
Thank you. Assistant Superintendent for Business, Mr. Tim.
So the last meeting, I attempted to just verbally give this presentation. There is no protection, no technology, so I'll give this with visuals as well. It looks like a lot of numbers. Natasha uses all the words, I use all the numbers. So on the left, you'll see all the contractors, and then I grouped in the bottom all our state contracts, which includes maybe five contractors underneath that. What you'll see in the left column of numbers is the base bid with allowances. That number is $43 million, $43.4 million. The middle column are what change orders. So those are not originally what we thought we'd be spending. Things happen like asbestos and other things that we uncover and need to be changed. But you can see the majority of that is through the Unimac, which is a general contractor, and United Safety. Majority of that is from the two of them. And the United Safety has almost doubled. We came across a lot of asbestos, and that is, that's where that cost is coming from right there.
And just so you guys know, Unimac, the first one is the general contractor. Consortium is the site. So the other guys outside just see doing blacktop and sidewalks. CB Strain is mechanical plumbing. And, oh yeah, there is mechanical and plumbing, there's three and five. Unity, of course, is electric. United Safety, you mentioned, is asbestos. 11400 is the furniture equipment.
No, it's the kitchen.
Kitchen equipment, what did I say, furniture? Sorry. And then SRI is your sprinkler system, and number nine is the windows.
You can see that the increase went from $43.4 to $48.4 million. I carry those numbers over to the next page. You can see the base bid plus change orders. The total of Phase One is $48.4 million. The construction incidentals, which are built into our budget, is $5.3 million. And then we have district incidentals. I have all the listings written up there, but those are things that we came across. We didn't want to cut any corners, we wanted to do things the right way. And so that, those were additional costs. So the projected cost for Phase One is $56 million. Phase 1A was when we did the brick facing on that building outside. It was like one of the first board meetings I went to. The re-pointing is what they called of that building. Phase Two estimated is $12 million, for a total of Phase One and Two of $68.89. So I carry that number over, and what we did is I, when I originally got here through ARC, we were able to get funding, the rescue plan of $6 million, written into a grant for the HVAC, plus windows of $770,000. So that actually is decreasing from that number. And I found an old resolution to remove asbestos for $400,000, which was, I don't even remember the data, but it was old. And I said, we could apply that here. So you can see that $68 million goes down to $61 million. We're authorized $64.8 million. So the remaining funds are $3.6 million that we have sitting there. Now, change orders, I'm not going to sit here and say we're not going to get another one, because we'll probably get a few more. You know, we're, as you said, we're rounding third coming home, or the bottom of ninth, whatever analogy you use. So, you know, I have to imagine the codes are close to being done. We've uncovered every package out there. But I expect a few more, but not any giant ones. We have what we call remaining allowances for Phase One and Two. So we built in these allowances. Those actually go before change orders we spend, we put it in the budget. So we have some balances remaining there. Those are untouched. Those probably will be used to some degree, but there'll be some money left over. And there's about close to $400,000 remaining contingency for Phase Two. So I add those numbers back in. In the fantasy world, you know, we keep all those numbers. So our real budget is $4.89. I like to be conservative and think that all the allowances and contingencies are going to be spent. So we're looking at close to $3.6 million remaining money. Going back, when we went out as a board and district to get $10 million extra dollars for this project, we'd be in a lot of trouble right now if we didn't have that. So it was a smart move. One of the reasons that we did that was because of COVID, and inflation went up, and all the original bids that we put down on paper increased significantly. Wood was one thing that went through the roof. It doubled in pricing. So everything went up in pricing, so we had to go out and add additional ten million. Because it was originally $54 million authorized, add $10 million of that to $64 million. So we're sitting on close to $4 million. Yes.
So what you're, definitely what you're saying is you're saying right now we're $4.8 million under budget.
Yes.
With the cushion, with all the added expenses, the overtime.
Yep.
As long as it's going on.
All the unknowns of it, yeah.
That's it. So I just wanted to get a feel for that. As we, as we get into finalizing this, I can type up these numbers and then start getting into Phase Three and the more at, and then I'll continue to do this till Phase Nine. So any questions here? So we're in good shape. We're in good shape.
Thank you.
Contingencies are slowing down, and we're in good shape, so.
Very good. Assistant Superintendent for People Personnel Services, Mrs. Duryea.
Okay, so I'm going to go off of Mr. Tim. I'm going to just update you a little bit about the change orders that People Personnel Services has received from special state education department, that, from the federal government. Indicator 13 over the summer, our teachers, school counselors, and psychologists and administrators have received training on Federal Indicator 13. So what that is, it's just a federal indicator for planning transitional vocational and career goals for any student 15 and older with an IEP. Here's where the difference in the change, change order comes from. State education in the past has been just given carte blanche from the federal government. State education in the past has been just given carte blanche from the federal government. Go oversight or accountability, but the federal government's a little disappointed in nine of the Nifty fifty states. And New York is one of the nine where the federal government's saying, you're just not quite continent, New York State. How are you holding your seven hundred and twenty districts accountable? And they said, well, we have the federal indicators and the districts conduct self-reviews. And with the self-review comes one hundred percent compliance with state ed. So indicator thirteen last, this current year, the New York State Education Department went out and out of the seven twenty districts, went and audited about, I think it was a hundred and thirty districts to see if they were in compliance with indicator thirteen. And I think there were eighty-two that were out of compliance, if I recall, eighty-two, eighty-six. Regardless, a high percentage. So we are held accountable to report, indeed audited by state education for indicator thirteen. I'm very confident that our professionals, the last week, the last two weeks and tomorrow is the next training, they've been receiving professional development to make sure they have a clear understanding of how to be in compliance. How do we need to change structures? Are there different things that need to be communicated? And I'm confident that's, that's going to happen. We'll have ongoing meetings. The audit's to be determined the date. I don't have that. So we're going to just take our change orders from state ed and be compliant. Another thing that we've been working with, with PPS, and this is really a proud moment. I just want to say that our aides, our paraprofessionals, our aides, monitors, teaching professionals, our teachers, they're hungry for knowledge and we've been hearing that. And I was out at a conference for the special education conference in New York State and it's always a vendor's dream. There's hundreds of vendors when you go there. And I love that. To see, you know, what are our needs, how does it meet our needs? And Port Jervis, we now are subscribed to, it's called Vector Solutions. And what that is, is it was such a reasonable cost and I had the money in the funds in a grant. So we have two hundred licenses. It's an online professional development virtual platform. And it all has a lot of special education development that's very specific to paraprofessionals, bus monitors, playground monitors, teaching assistants, classroom monitors, special ed, gen ed, gen ed teachers, regular teachers. It had such a beautiful buffet of professional development. What was really most attractive for the vector solutions to me, and I think that it really would remove the barrier of people just saying, I would love to do this, but I can't. I don't have the time. Many of the videos were ten minutes, fifteen minutes, seventeen minutes. They were very concise, clear. Folks can watch them, you know, during a prep or even if they wanted to take initiative and do it at home. So I think that's, you know, we're in the business of growing students, but we also have to grow as, grow our professionals and grow as professionals ourselves. So I'm really excited to kick that off with the buildings. And it really goes hand in hand in tandem with the journey that Dr. Bell has set forth for all of us with the PLC and Dr. Walklitz. And the last thing I just want to talk a little bit about is, again, we're, we, during summer in our People Personnel Services Department, oftentimes we go and visit our out of district students. So Peggy Fitzgerald and we had an intern this summer, thank you for approving her, Caitlin McDowell. They went out to many different sites to our out of district students and did site visits. We want to make sure, one, that as Dr. Bell said, when he's present for these construction workers, things get done and he can ask questions. So it's nice to see these are our students. Just because a student goes out of district, they are our students. So we did a lot of site visits to make sure their needs are being met. Also, if parents were requesting the possibility of them coming back to district or stay out there and out of district, but we want to want to do it. So we tried it during the summer because we have a small amount of kids. We've done a lot of site visits. So those are really, I think, the updates that I'd like the board to know in the public.
Very good, thank you. Thank you all for your reports and updates. Next up, we are up to our consent agenda items. These items include item A, Board of Education Reorganizational Regular Meeting of July ninth, two thousand twenty-four. B, Board of Education Special Meeting of July twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-four. C, CPSE Meeting Minutes for six seventeen, seven eight and seven seventeen, two thousand twenty-four. D, CSD Meeting Minutes for Date Range, January twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-four through July twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-four. E, Request for Disposal of HBE Bookroom Books and Phonics Textbooks. F, Request for Disposable Computer Equipment. Yeah, there's a couple of them. G, Additional Radio Stations and Television Stations. H, Addition to Annual Apointments for two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five School Year. John Bell, Dr. Bell is backup certifier of payroll. I, which is a grant to PJ Middle School in the amount of five hundred dollars from ExxonMobil Educational Alliance Program for STEM Programs. And that would be all for consent items. Do I have a motion and a second for approval?
I'll move.
Second. Nancy and Michael, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next are Personal Employment Agenda Items, Personnel Appointment. These items include item A, Resignation Support Staff, Position five four two, clerk typist. B, Resignation Support Staff, Position two eight four seven, school monitor. C, Leave of Absences. D, Appointment Support Staff, Vacancy two six one zero, Position four zero three four, probationary, security attendant. Item E is Appointment Support Staff, Vacancy two six two one, Position four two seven, probationary, senior food service helper. F, Appointment Vacancy two six two two, Coaching Appointments for two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five School Year. Item G, Appointment Vacancy two six two two, Mentors for the two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five School Year. H, Appointment Support Staff, Vacancy two six three three, Position four zero one, probationary, clerk typist. Item I, Appointment Support Staff, Vacancy two six three four, Position five four two, probationary, clerk typist. Item J, Appointment Support Staff, Student Hygiene Stipend, temporary for the two thousand twenty-four Summer School. Item K, Appointment Support Staff, Substitute Food, Food Service Helper, excuse me. Item L, Appointment Support Staff, Substitute Food Service Helper, Temporary Summer School. M, Change in Status, Support Staff, Provisional to Permanent Status for Clerk Typist. And that would conclude those. Do I have a motion and a second for approval of the Personnel Employment Agenda Items?
I'll make a motion.
Second. Michael and Kathy, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next are our action items. Item A is a memorandum of agreement between PJ CSD and SUN Potstan. May I have a motion and a second to bring this to the floor? Are there any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item B, Memorandum of Understanding Between PJ CSD and Orange County Department of Mental Health. May I have a motion and a second to bring this to the floor?
I'll move it.
Second.
Bill and Kathy, thank you. Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item C, Side Letter of Agreement, Port Jervis Association of Principals Concerning Annual Professional Performance Review. May I have a motion and a second to bring this to the floor?
I'll move it.
Second.
Nancy, Kathy, thank you. Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item D, Capital Project, Allowances and Change Orders. May I have a motion and a second?
Motion.
Move it.
Mike and Kathy, thank you. Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item E, Second Extension of Lease Between PJ CSD and Catholic Charities of Orange, Sullivan and Ulster Counties. May I have a motion and a second to bring this to the floor?
Motion.
Mike, Kathy, thank you. Again, any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. F is a Resolution Authorizing Execution of Letter for Municipal Advisor Services. Bernard Donegan may have a motion and a second to bring this item to the floor.
Move it.
Second.
Kathy and Joe, thank you. Any discussion or questions? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. G is a Revision to PJ CSD two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five Student Calendar. May I have a motion and a second?
Motion.
Second.
Mike and Bill, thank you.
Just for point of clarification, the change in the calendar is instead of having the last day of school be Friday, June twenty-seventh, and having the seventh snow days, we'll make the last day of school Wednesday, June twenty-fifth, and have five snow days. Now, if we had a really bad winter, we could always add Thursday and Friday. But if anybody has a, a good memory, you'll remember how beastly hot it was in June. So the idea, I'd rather plan on getting out earlier and only have to alter the schedule if we have a really bad winter. And, and that last week wasn't as bad because it was only three days. If it was five, we would have a mutiny on our hands because it was so hot. So I'd rather have a three-day week than a five. And then we'll go from there if we have to modify it.
Very good. Any questions or concerns regarding the student calendar?
Is graduation that Friday, the twenty-seventh?
It'll stay, be on Friday, yep.
Good question.
Are you here this year?
Too soon.
Too soon.
Yeah, the rumors started.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. H is Adoption of a District-Wide Academic Plan. May I have a motion and a second? Motion.
Second.
Mike and Kathy, thank you. Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. That would be all of our action items. Next up are Board Member Items. I don't believe there are any, but we have Board Committee Reports. No, that is confirmed, correct? Don't have any committee?
I guess one thing, it's on Town of Deer Park.
Town of Deer Park?
Yeah, just Social Security Office is moving closer to Port Jervis. It's going to be at eighty-five Crystal Run Road, Middletown, New York. One's opening Wednesday, July twenty-fourth.
Where in, I think Newburgh.
Newburgh, yeah. The mobile DMV will be at Town of Deer Park Senior Center on August thirtieth, ten-thirty to three-thirty. Will be closed between twelve and one to lunch. The Deer Park Senior Shuttle Service is available on Tuesdays and Thursdays. Please call one day before. It'll be available times, call the bus, we reach seven four five, four four zero, one 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 one. Extension one, west two fifty-five and over, and at Deer Park Residence. And there's a wide variety of meetings going on over the next month and a half. Please go onto townofdeerparknewyork.com for the dates.
Excellent, thank you. Nancy, was that I am, please, from Port Jervis?
Yeah, there was a couple of things I didn't know if I should include, but I figured Matamoros is close enough, so I'll just throw it in. I mean, and I'm, I'm doing all of the extracurricular stuff. So there's Bingo at the Matamoros Firehouse. I happen to love Bingo, so I thought I would include this. Because there's nothing like a good bingo game. It's August ninth at five-thirty. And then I had Gray Towers on the eleventh. The Chamberlain Brass is doing a free concert to the public. On August seventeenth, the Cuddybackville Reform Church is hosting a Hope Alive Music Festival. It, Hope Alive is a not-for-profit organization for finding missing children and adults. So they're having a free breakfast from eight to nine-thirty. And then eleven AM to six PM, they have a whole music program for the day. Also on the seventeenth, in Orange Square from three to nine in Port Jervis, is the Italian Festival. Lots and lots of really good food, entertainment, singers, comedians, dancers. And they do have chairs, but you might want to bring a chair because they always run out. The twenty-eighth, from five to eight, the National Night Out Against Crime has been rescheduled. Starts at five o'clock in Riverside Park. On the twenty-ninth, at four PM, the Port Jervis Free Library, they're doing some crafts for adults and children, treasure chests and mimics crafting. I don't know what that is, but it sounds good. Registration is encouraged. You can call them or go on their website. And of course, August thirty-first, the dedication of the East Main Street School at one PM. That is all.
Very good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you Nancy and Joe for those. Next up is Board Member Comments. We'll start down by Mike.
Sounds like lots of progress and good things are happening. So thank you, Dr. Bell, for taking the reins and keeping control of it and looking forward to what the rest of the summer brings and looking forward to the dedication.
Nancy?
I don't have anything.
Natasha, thank you for your report. John, Tim, thank you for yours. And it was really amazing going around the school this evening to just see the progress. That's, it's kind of exciting to be a little part of that. That's all.
Thank you. Mark?
Two things. One, just truly heartwarming, just seeing Chase Field full of kids and running around and, and mixed with pride and jealousy. And then the second thing, you know, as I was reviewing, the HBE, you know, as they're getting rid of, you know, some books and some things, you know, not banning anything, just, you know, some books are dog-eared. It brought me back because one of the books on there was a book called The Slave Dancer. And if you've ever, if you've never read it, I don't care if it's an adult or not, you should read it. And it had a lasting effect on me from reading that in fifth grade. And so seeing that on there was, brought back a flood of memories. It was a very powerful book about slavery. And it was truly something that nothing's more happy. So thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Joe?
Just want to say it's very impressive to see that we're that much under budget. I mean, that's a very large percentage of the target, so hopefully.
Don't find any more asbestos.
Just don't lift anything up.
Kathy?
Oh, Kathy, I just do a little bit of everything.
Bill?
Lovely, thank you.
Okay. Nothing from me as well. Brings us to dates to remember as we're in the middle of the summer. Outside of the ceremony, there's not much other than to point out that Port Jervis City School District Board of Education will hold its next regular board meeting on Tuesday, August twentieth, two thousand twenty-four, at seven PM. Again, we'll be here in the ASK Library. And then one last special note. The District-Wide Safety Plan is available for review by the public. Appointments can be made to review the plan with the Buildings and Grounds Office by calling eight four five, eight five eight, three one zero zero, extension one seven five zero two, or by emailing ccosmo@pjschools.org. This item will be on the August twentieth agenda for adoption. And at this point, I will take a motion and a second to adjourn our regular business meeting. Motion. Michael and Joe, thank you. The time is eight-ten, twenty-ten. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you all, have a good evening.